Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. So first thing we need to do is take roll call.
Uh, trustee Borowski.
Here.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
I'm here, remote.
Oh, no, we need a motion to let her in, so, yeah.
Uh, trustee Micho.
Here.
Trustee O'Connor.
Here.
Trustee Tanucci.
Here.
Okay, now we need a motion to let trustee O'Reilly and trustee Chris Meyer to attend remotely.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, moved by trustee Borowski, seconded by trustee Tanucci, roll call.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, um, let's all rise for the pledge allegiance, you guys are in the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to all who stand in the business of liberty, justice, and law.
Okay, we have a, what I think to be a light agenda, so I have a goal to try to get us out of here in an hour or less. I don't know if anyone...
How good do you have goals?
I don't know if that'll actually work or not, but we're gonna, we're gonna try. Um, so, the, um, the first item on the agenda is we have three homeowners associations, but I don't think they're here. Um, is anyone from Oak Island here? Sebastian Pigeon? Uh, Joe Gallo from the Orchards of Long Grove? Or, uh, Andy Maggio from Royal Melbourne? I don't see anyone here from that. So, uh, seeing no HOAs here, let's move into the public comment portion. Does anyone have public comments? All right, nobody online have public comment? So, you can all hear me this time, right? I believe that's correct, all right. Um, then let's keep ourselves moving. The next item is the, uh, public, uh, safety report. Um, do we have a report?
No, really, the bridge was hit in the last two weeks. It was there, it's something that arrested, actually, the day of our last meeting. Uh, she was just firing, uh...
Right after the meeting.
He was charged with felony for, uh, reckless discharge of firearm.
Your Fields Bridge got hit a couple days ago. Yeah, yeah, like, at least it's downtown.
Um, can everyone hear what Rita said? Uh... Okay, all right, we'll just keep, we'll just keep moving along. Um, to speed the meeting up, we have the consent agenda. There is one thing, though, I wanted to mention, um, and that is, uh, that in the minutes, uh, I had asked Michelle to change under the, your note, um, where it says, trustee O'Connor reported that the Route 53 task force is in the process of educating the public on their activities and getting signed petitions. I believe that should read Green Corridor Coalition.
Correct.
So...
I made the change, and I'll note that in these minutes.
Is everyone okay with it?
That's the, the official.
The official one, right, yeah, so, I wanna make sure. I'm not sure how it actually was said or got twisted, but that's what it, that's what it is, so everyone okay with that? Lemon?
I, I very well may have said the corridor coalition.
I, I, you know, I didn't know, I don't remember what you said, that's why I said, but I know that's what it should be, so we should have it corrected. Um, are there any other comments, or, um, does somebody wanna make a motion to approve? Okay, so moved by trustee Micho, seconded by trustee O- O'Connor. Uh, roll call, please, and that is the meeting, the, the meeting minutes were amended, too, as part of that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion, motion carried. Um, we have, uh, we're lucky, um, that, um, specifically, uh, Jenny's husband, uh, Nick Micho is, is volunteering, uh, to be on the Senate Corridor Committee. Uh, he was recruited by the CFC Chair, Jeanette Berger, and, uh, uh, he's incredibly well-qualified. And I interviewed him, but he didn't know I interviewed him, and he just, he knows everything. So, um, I, I would ask for a motion to appoint him to a three-year term, um, on the, uh, CSCC, uh, Senate Conservancy and Senate Corridor Commission.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Tanucci, roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Epstein. Epstein.
And trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Congratulations, thank you. That's it?
Thank you so much.
And, and you sprinted from the parking lot, Nick.
All right, so, um, you know, you, I, I, the next item on the agenda is something that I take great pleasure in doing. Um, you know, we, um, we've got somebody here that's with us tonight that, um, has been with the village for twenty years. That's an incredible amount of time, and you know, I, I was looking at the Bureau of Labor Statistics, um, I found a little document, and the average for a government worker is only six point six years, so you definitely beat those odds. So, what we would like to do, um, if we may, is, um, read the resolution honoring, uh, your service, uh, for the twenty years of service. So I'm gonna go ahead and read that, if I, if I may, uh, and then we'll wanna present you with something afterwards, so. Uh, whereas the village president and board of trustees desire to recognize employees who have served the citizens of Long Grove with distinction and, whereas Margarita Ramanella has faithfully served the citizens of Long Grove since two thousand and two, and whereas Margarita Ramanella, as the village's longest-tenured employee, has served under two village managers, two, uh, interim village managers, four village presidents, and twenty-three village trustees, you need more than ten fingers for that. And whereas, uh, during Margarita Ramanella's tenure, it is important to note that her many contributions include those as part of the staff that made the Sunset Grove and Menards retail destination projects a reality, and whereas the work of permit issuance, building inspections, and code enforcement require exceptional multitasking skills, I can, and can often be a thankless job, Margarita Ramanella has coordinated and directed this work for two decades, two decades, including before and during after the pandemic. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the village president and village board of trustees hereby express its appreciation and commend Margarita Ramanella for her many years of faithful service to the citizens of Long Grove, and be it further resolved, that the village president of Long Grove is hereby directed to present Margarita Ramanella an appropriate symbol of our appreciation for her service to the citizens of Long Grove. I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor, uh, seconded by trustee Micho, roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Absolutely.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Congratulations! I don't have to talk to the whole board if you're with you, do you want? Uh, what we'd like to do is present it to you, and we have our photographer here, um, he retired from trustee and is now, um...
You are the only one that's in the picture.
I was one.
The only one that is still there.
Maybe one or two others. Another one. I was just thinking about that. I was just thinking about that, like, I'm probably twenty-three and not twenty-one.
The whole board will be in the picture?
Yeah.
The whole board?
Free and unboxed.
Oh, can we, can we see them in the picture, in the TV?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Why don't you move this way, step forward a little bit? Oh, you want everybody in there?
Yeah.
Oh, they want everybody that way.
Yeah, see that one?
Back up here, okay, here we go. And we'll get another angle here. Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate the, the, making this official.
Do you appreciate it, George?
No, I just wanna thank everyone, this recognition is, is very meaningful to me, I appreciate it.
We wanna thank you, though.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, it really goes a long way, means very much to me, thank you. Thank you to the entire board, thank you to Greg, who's been of tremendous support since his first day of arrival here, it's very much appreciated, thank you, everyone, and thank you to my support at home for the crazy day. Yeah, good times.
Do you wanna get, you wanna get a picture of George?
Yeah.
Whoever wants to be in there.
Thank you, George, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
George will send us his, uh, his D E or fill us later.
Congratulations.
George, one of the twenty-three trustees?
Yes.
So seven of the twenty-three are here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going through.
Okay, so we're gonna, um, keep ourselves moving. Um, Greg, do we, we don't really have a village planners' report, or do you wanna give a, do you wanna give a brief readout of the village planners' report?
There, there's really nothing to...
Good night, thank you, hi.
Thank you, good night.
The, uh, the only, uh, we've got that gray wall property coming back up, and the only reason that's coming back up before the AC is because of, um, they didn't show at last AC meeting, so it's being rehearsed then. But other than that, everything, we know the PZZBA petition's been withdrawn, there's no CSCC meeting this month until September seventh, and so from the planning perspective, um, uh, two things in front of the AC, so, that's it.
Any questions?
Just maybe add a comment, I, I guess, I was a little bit disappointed that, that he didn't come to the board, um, but I, I just kinda wonder about, like, how he handled the PR on that, we got a lot of negative feedback, and I think we were pretty open to the press about getting just an enormous, enormous volume of negative emails. I wonder if reading that in the paper has any influence on any of the decisions to petition him? Now, if, you know, if we go into the press and say, oh my gosh, we have four hundred or a thousand emails, whatever the number was, I don't know how that impacts the, the decision process to petition or, uh, consider. So I wonder, going forward, how we handle, you know, PR matters in that regard, I mean, maybe, you know, me, I think we, me, I'd like to stay as neutral as I can until we get to that point of having that petition in front of us, you know? But just, just kind of a random thought, I was just thinking through that.
I, I don't think anything in the press that I read, um, knew the percentage of pro and con on the emails. I don't think, I don't, I don't think I know, I know, you know, I mean, there, there could have been, we had, what, over eleven hundred emails?
Yeah.
And some, of course, were from outside of, of Long Grove, a lot were from outside Long Grove, but I, I, I don't know the percentage, and I guess no reporter asked that question.
That's interesting, I, I don't...
Well, we were, we were purposely cautious on what we said, because it was not in our court, and, um, you know, we just purposely were cautious, right? So that's why there was limited information communicated, we did not wanna taint anything in the process, 'cause anything we say could taint the hearing of the planning commission, so that's why we, you know, really stayed out of commenting.
One unfortunate thing was, some of the information that was reported was wrong, specifically the location of the facility.
Yep.
And that could have caused even more of a negative reaction than we already had, because people were opposed to putting it where it was reported to be going, which was not the right place.
We were further handicapped by the fact that we're not in Home Rule, and so, something that other municipalities can do, they can, um, put a ban on assault rifles, we have no ability to do that, so there's some, you know, interesting little situations there, right? So, uh, I don't know, I, I thought we did the best we could, other than circumstances, so...
Where are we at with the PR firm issue? Do we have a PR firm back online, or...
We've got the, uh, we're talking to the last one on, I, I am on Friday, and then I'm gonna bring in the trustee O'Reilly, all three of them, and let her have a look at it, we're still under contract, but I'm curious right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Good night. Ask a question.
Oh, sure.
Um, just to piggyback off of, um, Chris's question, do we have any plans to sit down with the Menards people at this time to, um, go over and maybe re, reanalyze who, who, what, when, where, and how we can get those outlets taken care of, under, on, you know, under lease? Because obviously it passed the muster for them, it, it wasn't direct competition, um, you know, I think that, that if I owned a shopping center, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna put Dick's in there or Home Depot, right? You know, obviously, but I'm, I'm wondering if, um, you know, the powers that be came together, and this is, this is the first time since that development was built, that somebody stepped up, right? So it, it might be a good time to...
That's a good, that's a good point. We can do that.
Very good.
And I, I think we got a lot of information referentially.
Yep. Any other comments? If not, the moment you've been waiting for, the village engineers' report.
Well, thank you for that. Um, you get the engineers' report in the board packet, there's a number of things going on in the village, and, uh, if I may, I'll just, uh, go through a few of those here tonight. The Stimple Parking Lot last week, the access widening was complete with the paving, and it's now open up for traffic. The, uh, areas alongside of that access need to be filled with topsoil and reseated, that's scheduled for this week. The, um, parking lot entrance signs, as, as the board has talked about, are, are tired and need to be, uh, updated. The Eila Township is working on a proof for those signs, they did a great job with the population signs, and they're working on kind of a design with that, just kind of incorporate the village logo. Uh, we haven't gotten that yet, but, uh, once that is finalized, uh, it'll be brought forward to the board for approval, so prior to ordering those.
But did you say that Eila designed the village entrance signs?
The, uh, population signs.
Oh, they look nice.
Yep.
Much nicer.
They did a nice job with those, absolutely.
Yeah, they, they sent us several proofs, and they just, it just clicked, that one clicked.
Nice.
Uh, moving down to the, uh...
Other question?
Is there anything else?
Well, I, I wonder, um, Jean with the architectural control, right? She's an artist, am I correct?
She's a lawyer.
Well, I know that, too, but she, she seems, you know, that's, that's her committee, and I, I'm wondering, um, when she, she and I had a brief conversation, uh, I forget what it was about, but we talked signage in the village and how some uniformity would be really nice, so that people know that's a, a village sign, or, like, you know, like, you know, it's a street sign versus...
That's why, that's why we chose to use the logo.
Got it.
Well, we, I mean, we have somebody here that, we did all our street signs, right?
Yes. And, uh, and Dave did a nice job with adding the logo to the street signs.
So, I mean, I mean, you know, except for the problem is, uh, although our HOA spent money on it, but you still have some of the old signs in the, the HOAs, 'cause they were responsible for paying for those signs.
Right.
So, some replaced, some didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I notice the sign cluttered when I'm in the downtown area.
Oh.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at no right turn, and I'm looking at, you know, this shop and that shop, and we're, we had a direction going that way, and don't hit the bridge, and, you know, ma, ma and poses this way, you know, it's just, there's so much going on, it's like, if we could just sorta...
Maybe we actually need a sign that does say, don't hit the bridge.
But hold on a second, so you're gonna, there's gonna be some cleanup, right?
Yeah, we've got...
Hey, but hold on, listen to me.
We've, we've got a letter going out to the, uh, all the businesses throughout the community, with, with an emphasis down on the B1 district for signage, as well as accessory structures, and, um, we're gonna talk about outside service, because everything's been done without permits during the COVID situation, but we wanna get rid of some of the junky-looking signs that, uh, aren't consistent.
They shouldn't be there, but we're, we allow it to, okay, then I...
The other, the other thing we need to do, too, is we start talking about more uniformity on the signs, we need to make sure that we have a code that is consistent, and that it's not subjective, so that way it keeps our post and somebody else's in there, that it doesn't just fall on somebody's particular tastes, and that, uh, we have some consistency across the board, and...
Thanks.
But I think that's important.
Yeah. That addressed the airstream trailer that's sitting in the middle of downtown. It's, it's near, it's near, it's just south of the TV bar, it's like a scene, it's a story there.
That's an accessory structure, that's gonna have to be removed, yes.
Jeff, you wanna continue?
Yes, sir. Okay, uh, moving down, the Checker Road beta testing for the traffic calming, the baseline traffic data is being collected this week, so the counters are in place over there. Uh, next week, uh, we were able to borrow the Village of Kildir's, uh, electronic speed sign, so that'll be placed for eastbound traffic next week, so that's the first thing in the sequence of, of the testing for that. The following, the following week, that sign will be turned around for the, the westbound, and just, uh, kind of as a brief recap, that, uh, speed sign captures vehicle speed and number of vehicles, so we'll be able to get some data from the, uh, cloud storage that, uh, that sign offers as well. Moving down, uh, the 2022 road program, that is ninety-nine percent complete, there's still a little bit of restoration that needs to be done along the roadside edges, and then, uh, once the grass is growing, uh, that project will be closed out. The preventative pavement maintenance, number five, which is the Reclamite, that was applied last week, and the sand blotter that, uh, is applied right after the chemical is applied was swept up over the weekend, so all the roads, the sand blotter has been set, swept up. I have driven through the village, you know, that's still a fresh, uh, chemical on the road, so it's still, uh, very noticeable, so over the next few weeks, the, um, that'll kind of fade away, and the road will start looking, uh, more like it did, uh, before that Reclamite was applied to it. Uh, I just wanted to touch on the village hall expansion, uh, in the engineers' report, uh, we were, we, manager Jackson and I were discussing a meeting to move that forward possibly this week, I understand that's gonna be moved until next week due to scheduling conflicts. The next item is the Old McHenry Road pathway from downtown to Route 22. The Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, ITUP for short, uh, has their call for projects out right now for grant funding on that. Uh, manager Jackson and myself, uh, sat down last week just to kind of discuss the program and the applicability of the Old McHenry Road path for this program. Uh, we both think that it's a good fit, um, but, uh, with the meeting, uh, in the middle of last week, we weren't able to pull a lot of the information together, uh, to have a, um, robust, maybe, conversation about it tonight, so I know Greg issued a, uh, staff memo, and we'll be prepared to discuss it more in detail at the next board meeting.
Jeff, why, why to 22, why not the Utopia going further north?
Uh, downtown to, that's a good question, um, we certainly can, uh, expand it, the downtown to Route 22 is what, what's that?
Well, can I just answer, so, so, we kinda end, end up at the village, uh, limits there, right, at 22, so the, when Route 22 gets widened, there'll be a path that goes all the way down, almost all the way up to 83, and then you'll be able to get up Kruger, right? So, up north Kruger, so I, you know, where would it go from there, um, just, 'cause you'd be in Hawthorne Woods if you just keep going north across 22.
I'll need to look at a map, I don't understand what you're saying, so when you say you'll be able to go up Kruger...
So what we're saying is, when Route 22 gets widened...
Yep.
There'll be, um, a path that will go along Route 22.
Yep.
Um, so that, if, if we get this path, then it, then it would connect to Old McHenry.
Okay.
And you'd be able to go east-west along 22, and then that'll get you to north Kruger, is what I'm saying, so at least then you're starting to get a, you know, a, a way to get up north towards us, right?
Yeah, but you still can't go down Kruger, right? We're still...
Uh, no, but you at least, north Kruger's a thirty mile an hour road, right? And then it's widened after you get past where all the trees are, right? So you, so one could perhaps safely, almost safely ride their bike there on Kruger, just to have that one narrow spot, maybe there's something you can do there at that point, you know?
Keep going north.
Keep going north, that's, there, there lies where we get into trouble, right? Because where do you go from there to get to, to Diamond Lake Road?
Um, so, the, the money for the grant is that limited by, by what? I mean, why can't we go for like...
Oh, the whole thing, the whole enchilada, another path somewhere else, another segment?
Right.
The, the dollar amount's capped at three million, and based on the numbers that were just presented for, um, uh, downtown to, um, 22 is two point nine.
And we have to pay a portion of that, it's not free.
That's correct.
A little piece of it?
Is it, uh, it's twenty, right?
Yeah, it's an eighty-twenty split on the construction and all, uh, phases of the, uh, engineering, planning, and design.
But, you know, if we could get the whole two point nine, that'd be fabulous. Better than the sharp stick in the eye.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The, the problem, or, an issue is, forest preserve is, um, if you say it's north, south, and east and west there, even though it's on a slant, forest preserve is on the west side of Old McHenry, and to get to Kruger, it'd be safer if you didn't have to cross Old McHenry, you know, to get to that sidewalk that, that, um, ITUP's gonna put in, but, um...
So we should've put a tunnel in on it.
Well, well, that's not a bad idea.
The bridge.
Plan to bridges.
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
Um, I think you're, you have permission to continue to move on.
Okay, uh, the next item I wanted to touch on was number nine, this is the Lake County Public Works, uh, sanitary sewer force man that they're repairing on Route 83 on the east side, just south of 22. The reason I just wanted to bring that up, uh, on Friday, there was quite a lengthy traffic delay in the morning, um, the village, uh, didn't get any notification of it, but I did find out that the county set one of their very large concrete structures on Friday, uh, closed down the northbound lane of, the right-hand northbound lane of Route 83 for a few hours, backed up traffic quite a bit. Um, I did inquire with the county, um, and ask them to let us know if there's any more plant, such planned closures, and they did let me know that in about two weeks, uh, a similar operation is going to take place, because they have to set the, uh, the lid of that structure, which will involve bringing the crane back on-site, so I asked them to let me know the date and time for that, so that we can, uh, get the word out. Project is still, uh, scheduled to be complete in about three weeks, so, um, more information on that as I hear it from the county. Next item, number, dropping down to number sixteen, uh, the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission also has their call for projects out for watershed management board grants. Last week, trustee O'Connor and village manager Jackson and myself traded some emails about the applicability of the drain tile under Route 53 being a good candidate, and it is a good candidate, uh, however, Greg and manager Jackson and myself, we spoke this afternoon, and I would like to pull together a little bit more information on that, both kind of scope and what the impact is to the village before proceeding any further, kind of similar to the staff memo that Greg put together, uh, for the Old McHenry Road path, so that one's, uh, being, kind of, uh, more information's being gathered, and at the next board meeting, hopefully there's enough, uh, information, we can have a discussion and get the direction if the village wants to pursue a grant, uh, for that. the village wants to pursue a grant for that. Last week, the village, or IDOT issued their multi-year program. The Route 22 widening is still on there, but in the out years of their 2024 to 2028 plan. So, and it's been on the out years for 24 years now. So take that for what it is. But more importantly, the Route 22 and Route 83 intersection improvements is still in the program. They had the design engineering for that intersection improvement scheduled for next year. Contacted IDOT, and that's a little bit optimistic. They don't think that that's going to happen next year, but we'll certainly keep our eyes and ears on, on that project as well. And then just the last thing.
The $500,000, the $500,000 for that. Okay.
Correct, correct.
In the budget. Okay.
I have a question to schedule, referring to 22 widening, schedule for 24 to 28. Does that mean it'll begin sometime in that timeframe? Or construction will be throughout that timeframe?
It'll begin in that, somewhere in there, but the, there's all of the, the preceding steps to get to construction in the program as well, which is the design engineering, the land acquisition, utility relocations. So similar to the intersection, the 2028 for construction of the 22 widening, maybe a little bit optimistic as well. But IDOT has been pretty silent on that. So as, as I hear more information, believe me, Long Grove as well as the Village of Kildir is very interested when, when that project is actually scheduled to go. So.
Have, have, I have a question. Have, have we ever tried to work with, say Buffalo Grove and Kildir and Hawthorne Woods, even Barrington, to, to joint forces together to, to force the issue that this has gone on and on and on? And it makes us look like, well, like there's something wrong with us that, that everybody else can get an expansion except Long Grove? Have we ever tried?
Not as specific as that, but we can, we can look at having those conversations. We did align on the priority roads with Lake County, and that's one of them, including the overpass on 83 and widening of 45. So we did do that. And we, and that got submitted to the state of our priority projects, which this is one of them.
If we went beyond paperwork and, and, and created a group in, with a single voice because of the number of people who don't live in Long Grove, who are forced onto that road year after year after year.
Good idea.
I would make that suggestion to you.
Work with managers.
Yeah, Greg, Greg's going to start with the managers, village managers on that. I will ask one other question though, too. Does anyone know, are we, is all the property acquisition resolved too? Are we in the middle of any of it? Does anyone know? Yeah, I mean, there's some parcels that have, I mean, part, some of the things that slows it down is property acquisition. Does anyone know, do we have any parcels that have not been resolved yet, where there was some questions and concerns? Vic, do you know?
I think that there were some. I'm, I'm trying to check our files. I know Route 83, we have some issues as well. But if I can come back to that, I'll, I'll see if I can check our latest on that.
Because there's another side to this too, is making sure that all those things are resolved, because that's, the property acquisition's one of the pieces that slows it down. So.
Well, 20 years. I mean, how, how slow can you be?
No, well, yeah.
If it's any consolation, the easternmost leg of Route 22 between the tollway and Route 41 took 23 years, notwithstanding Route 22, to be done. And IDOT just has not been always well-funded enough or have the property in time or have, has shifting priorities. And I think we see that Route 22, while it's been on five-year list for, I'm going to guess upwards of 30 years, only certain segments have been completed to date. And there's still some segments to be done.
I'm not sure that was consolation, but it was instructive.
Yeah. A mom would call that an excuse.
Okay. Thanks for the suggestions. Appreciate it, Bobby.
And the last item that I just wanted to hit on, President Bill, is the pothole that we talked about at the last board meeting. Contacted IDOT, they were able to fill that. This is at the intersection of Robert Parker Coffin at 83. I also let IDOT know there's a few other potholes in the area, and they have that intersection and area on their radar. So.
Maybe there's a couple of miles of potholes on Route 22.
Noted. So that, unless there's any other.
Rita's got a question for you.
Oh, yeah.
Rita's got a question.
Yeah, and this may not be your, your sandbox. Under the permit project update, specifically New Perspectives and Harbor Chase.
I'm working with Vic on legal action.
Thank you. Should we have?
Legal communication, let me say it that way.
Should, should part of the ordinance be that there is a, an escrow, A, we, you know, escrows aren't much good. And, and after a certain amount of time, penalties kick in. Should we consider that the next thing we have to?
I can review that, see if it's something we can put into our, our policies and our codes on that.
We, we do, we do get security for those projects. The problem is with, with both of those developments, we have seen repeatedly ineffective implementations of the landscaping.
I, I tried to picture Harbor Chase without, without, or just with lawn, as has been suggested from time to time. And I, I, I just think it would look even worse. It, it would be so barren, so plain Jane, so to speak. Not, not the two-foot leaves they have there any better. It's just, I can't picture a bit of it and making a grass, making.
We've also, I've given staff the direction to put a hold on any permits that New Perspectives, Arboria, the old Arboria has been seeking, because they've been trying to approach us on, on their signage and a couple of other things. And I faced off trustee O'Reilly's concerns that she brought up a couple of meetings ago as well, when, when the AC was looking at something for New Perspectives. So we're, until we get some communication back from them, which we're not getting right now, that's why Vic's getting involved.
Any other comments or questions for Jeff? If not, we're going to keep our, keep us moving here. Village president and trustee reports. I'm not going to have a report today. So I will, I'll just go down the line. Trustee O'Reilly, do you have a report?
No.
No. Trustee Chris Meyer?
Just to mention, based on the action you all took last board meeting, we'll be working with the village accountant and Greg to revise our reports to reflect those changes. That's it.
Thank you. Nice work. Trustee Barowski?
Nothing to report. Swallow meeting Thursday. More to follow.
Thank you. Trustee O'Connor?
No, nothing to report.
Trustee Micho?
No report.
Trustee Tanucci?
I just have something quick. I just want to highlight something on Greg's report. He's got a table or spreadsheet toward the end of his report, a couple items in there, 11 and 12, regarding the implementation of the remove and replace permit, the virtual inspection. And we're going to be discussing that in the next meeting. And there'll be an amendment to the village code under consideration at the next meeting that goes along with that.
Cool stuff. Thank you. Any report? Moving along, village managers report. Three things real quick. The audit's just about wrapped up. The response from Sikkage is that things have gone exceptionally smooth and well. So kudos to our partners over at Sidler as well. Second thing is the RFP for the water plant operation is done. I put a copy of that in the Google Drive for the board members to take a look at. This was requested to take, for us to take a look at. It's been sent to legal for a legal review, and I'm identifying a contractor that won't bid on the project from a technical review, just to make sure the language is proper. And then I'll bring it back to the board asking approval for release. Meeting ago, or two meetings ago, I was asked about the noise ordinance and our work on the noise ordinance. That is now complete. All the research, the research is done. I have to put a cover memo on it to, to the village board on the options for sound intensity studies, decibel levels that have been accepted based on noise ordinances elsewhere. My synopsis of a review of six significant noise ordinances in the, in the neighboring municipalities. But that project is complete. It's just requiring a cover, or a cover memo, staff memo to the board.
Where in the Google Drive is that RFP located?
It should be in my, under village managers.
Response?
If it's not, then I apologize.
Oh, here it is.
Okay.
I will note, one thing I noticed.
I see a folder with nothing in it.
I will note, one thing I noticed, I don't know if everyone saw it, in the Lake County crime stats, we had 12 noise complaints in July. So that, I found that interesting, a big spike.
I've, I've got it on the Google Drive. It's draft, draft water operations, RFP, on the top. I've got it.
Yeah. When I click on that folder, it just says drop files here. It doesn't show anything. Crash.
Yeah, I was, I couldn't get onto my Google Drive. On here, everything was empty on it too. I don't know what's wrong. Let me, I, I will upload it again.
Okay.
Just to make sure it's there for everybody. But it's right here.
Yeah, I, I believe, I'd just like to take a look at it.
Yep, yep.
Anything else for?
Bill, I, I can give an update on the Route 22. I did just check our files.
Thank you.
The, the village and IDOT had been working on an agreement by which the village, we have a number of easements along the Route 22 corridor. The village and IDOT would have an agreement as to some of the upgrades. You may recall that we had, I can't remember the name of the firm out of Graves Lake, do some renderings of landscaping for the right-of-way perimeter. The, the last exchange that I see from our correspondence with IDOT was in the summer of 2020. And that was our inquiry, and they were essentially saying, we've got our hands full with the pandemic. We'll get back to you. And I don't know, and maybe Jeff has an update, but I don't know that there's been any communication with IDOT since then.
Jeff's shaking his head.
I haven't heard anything or, or reached out to him. So.
Perhaps it's time.
You can do it. Yep.
Yeah, that's why I asked the other question, right? So are we, there's something we should be doing, right? Directly with IDOT. So.
Yeah, well, the ball was in its court back in the summer of 2020, but we can certainly rattle some cages, or at least attempt to.
Yep. Go ahead, Rita.
Remember they were, they were hurrying us to?
I know they were, right. We had all this stuff. We, stone design and everything else.
Yeah, hurry up and wait.
Right. Yep. So I just want to make sure that Don comes back up and says the ball's in our court. We're holding it up. So, because that, I'm waiting for that to happen.
Well, being passive is, is nice for a period of time. I think it's time that we, we address the needs of the people who drive that road.
Yep. Great point, Bobby.
You know, there's been a perception out there, incorrect perception, Long Grove is trying to slow or stop or oppose the widening. Of course, that's not true at all.
That's not true.
But that's what you read on social media.
Yep. All right. So anything else for village manager Jackson or village attorney Filippini?
Just to give that to, for a person talking earlier about PR, if we're getting bad press about 22, this being an election year, it would be good to do a PR by saying, it's not us, it's Springfield that's the opponent to doing any widening in a timely fashion. And see if that changes anybody's perception because they need some votes. There'd be the state representative or the state senators in our area.
Good point. Good point.
Thank you, press agreeing that PR.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen anything recently though, just, you know, unless you have. So.
It's not been recent, no.
No, it's a long time ago. Yeah.
And who would talk about anything like that when there are so many other important things?
Yeah. All right. So any, anything else? Because if not, I think tonight, we wanted to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the acquisition and disposition of property and investments. Am I correct? Or is it just the acquisition and disposition of property?
Acquisition and disposition of property.
Okay. So I'm assuming everyone wants to go into executive session. So we would, would somebody like to make a motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Micho, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call?
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
Trustee Barowski?
Hi.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. George, thanks for being here. Thanks for taking the pictures.
Till roadside.
Um, Jeff, we don't, I don't think we need you. You can go. Okay.
Have a nice evening.
We need Vic though. Vic's got to stay.
I have an, I have what I think is an executive session question.
Rita, does it relate to land acquisition or disposition?
Well, I don't know. The, there's a subpoena for 5176 Epticus in the village manager report.
Yeah, that is. That, that, yeah, that was something that we just held records for, and we provided the responsive records. That was not a matter of our litigation or anything like that.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and put us in executive session. Are we okay? Okay, we're now back in the regular session. I'm going to ask Vic to help me with the motion.
We would look for a motion to approve a broker contract with trustee O'Connor, subject to the foregoing of any brokerage fee and the disclosure of her status as village trustee in connection with the property at 5117 Arlington Heights Road, and to authorize village manager Jackson to sign the broker contract and any contract or backup offer with respect to that property in accordance with the direction in executive session.
Okay, moved by trustee Micho, seconded by, by trustee O'Connor. Roll call?
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Trustee Barowski.
Epstein.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Epstein.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Oh, you're muted. Bobby, you're muted.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Can I?
Oops. Okay, it's moved by trustee Micho. Okay, hold, hold up. Thought.
I don't know if this is an executive session question regarding the wishes of the owner of the South 15. Should that be discussed in the public session or in executive?
I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the.
She's saying that she wants to talk about the current wishes of the South 15, if that should be.
That's not an executive session matter, so.
And it's not an agenda item. I mean, so, but I can, I'm happy to talk one-on-one with any of the trustees on it.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by, by trustee Tanucci. Roll. Roll call, please.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
You voting out?
A journey. A journey. Thank you.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Hi, Jumbo.
Thank you.
Good night, Jumbo.